I'm sure Eva will join us, but I'd like to call to order the February 1st Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee meeting.
I'd like to call the Concord School Committee meeting to order.
And can we note that this meeting is being recorded and can we have a roll call, please?
Anderson present.
Who's present?
Morano present.
Rainie present.
Wilson present. Great. So we will start with our CCHS update. Hi, Darcy.
Hi. Yeah, so I know it's been a little while since Harry and I have been here, but we did have a few updates. So first, this was a little while ago that it was the height of kind of the Omicron effect on the school. But it definitely was a big effect for about a little over, I would say, the biggest for one week. But I would say about two weeks, there's definitely a height of the Omicron virus at CC as many people were out with Omicron or contact traced or many other things. But it seems, knock on wood, that we're mostly out of that based on what I've seen in the school committee, community, which is good. So that definitely was something that was very prevalent at the school. But I think we're looking good based on what I've heard about the numbers. And then also somewhat recently as well, we had the mid-years, which Mr. Mistrillo and decided to make optional to count towards your grade because of what was happening with the effects of Omicron, which I know that definitely relieved a lot of stress for a lot of students, especially as so many were home the week before or that week due to being out of Omicron. So I know that was definitely a decision that a lot of students really appreciated. And then kind of more recently, a lot of seniors have been hearing back from their schools. So I know that definitely a lot of stresses in the air as a lot of seniors are kind of hearing back from decisions. And Student Senate is definitely looking to kind of do things to relieve stress for seniors and also just make the process better. One thing that we do is called rejection cranes where people can write where they've been rejected. And we make cranes to show that you're not alone if you've been rejected because it's a very, it's a lot of people get rejected from schools or get in. So just to kind of show that. And then we're also looking towards our next spirit week, which is mostly taking place in March and April. So we organized the blood drive. I believe we're, we organize a few other sort of like the dodgeball tournament. I believe we're organizing another sports tournament. Also, spring sports are starting somewhat shortly. So we're going to have the spring sports fair. And we're also going to hold another powder puff game because that was popular. And this time we're doing it in conjunction with the Acton Boxborough Student Government. So those are the major updates I have. And thank you so much for letting Harry and I come to these meetings.
Thank you. Thank you, Darcy. That's quite a bit you have looking forward to coming up. Great. Does anyone have any questions, Darcy? Great job.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Very valuable to us. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so we'll go to our public comment now. And just to note that we have 15 minutes for public comment now. And then should there be additional comment time needed later, we return to it at the end of our meeting. So if you have a comment to make, please use the participant tab to raise your hand or turn on, turn on your video or make yourself known in some, in some way. Nancy Confee, Confee, hi, how are you?
Hi, thank you for having me. I'd like to make a statement from the League of Women Voters. We're disappointed to learn that the video of our candidate forum on January 27th, which was featuring two candidates running for a position on the school committee, was edited and then redistributed as fragments that no longer appear to represent the full views of both candidates as expressed in the forum. For years, it's been the league's policy that our videos be disseminated only in their entirety. And in this case, for which I apologize personally, candidates were not first asked to review or agree to this policy. But in all of our forums, the league endeavors to provide equitable opportunities for candidates to represent the positions to the public and the integrity of any political action is a central component of league values. So we just wanted to urge everyone to rely only on the full video versions of the candidate forum. They're posted on the league's website at LWVCC.org and on the Minuteman Media Network when becoming, if you're going to become informed about candidates' views and the differences in their positions. I want to encourage everyone to vote on Thursday and thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments? David Hostard.
Hey, my name is David Hostard and I would like to comment on the fee increase for fields that's being proposed. And I'm a Concord resident. I teach at LS, but which might not help my argument all that much. But my wife teaches at CC, so maybe that'll, maybe that'll balance that out in Melissa Carr. And I just wanted to, I run together with Ray Pavlik and Demograph, two teachers at CC. We run a soccer camp in the summer, Target Soccer Camp. And when we found out about these, these fee increases, you know, it was something that, that for us is, is a huge impact. A 400% increase of fees is something that would be, you know, really tough for us to absorb. And where we'd absorb them, we'd then have to pass them on to, you know, our participants. We have over, probably over 300 Concord residents per year. In our program, we employ another 25 or so kids, students and adults. So we feel like it's, it's a really a grassroots effort, something that is not sort of a cookie cutter program and, and one that we, one that we hope to be able to continue at an affordable price. And, and we're hoping, we're hoping that, that, you know, the committee can reconsider, you know, the increase and maybe the timing as well, given, you know, given our size, our small size. And it's a summer program. You know, we, we hope that, that this can be revisited in a way that maybe would be more, more absorbable, for lack of a better word, by somebody our size. Otherwise, we'd either have to find a different venue. You know, LS is half the price of what the proposed increases would be or we'd, or we'd have to, you know, pass on, pass on these costs to other Concord residents. So thank you for reconsidering.
Nat Carr.
Hi, my name is Nat Carr and I'm the director of Star Camp. So in similar vein of what Dave was just speaking, I wanted to come to talk about the proposed fee increases. And for those of you who aren't familiar with Star Camps, we've been a camp in Concord for, this will be our 39th summer. We've been running out of Concord Carlisle High School since the late 90s. And, you know, similar to what, what Dave was saying, a target, you know, this would have a real huge impact on us. We're relatively small camp. I'm a, this is a summer job for me. I'm a teacher and administrator at the Fenn School. My wife is a teacher at Alcott. We really, you know, do this work in the evenings and on, on, in the summertime to kind of, to make this work. And I think for us, you know, what I'm wrestling with is if these fees go up, it obviously has an impact on a number of different factors. We've worked incredibly hard to keep our, our costs and our price of our camp low to be accessible. In the 10 years that I've been the owner of the camp, we've only increased our rates a total of $80 and almost half, more than half of that's in the last two years and just managing the costs of COVID in our, in our just general increases in costs. We also provide a ton of scholarship funding. We've never turned away a camper who's wanted to come to camp, many of whom are not able to, to pay any tuition in a given year. And this would force us to likely raise our tuition in a way that we wouldn't want to. Would make us harder for us to pay our employees who are teachers from, from Concord and local community and a ton of high school and college student athletes. So, you know, again, really hoping to not have to increase our costs to the, to our families. And in addition to that, it's going to hurt us with, with compensating folks. And it's going to, you know, on a personal level, it would certainly hurt us in our ability to, to, you know, function as an organization. So I know it's a big decision, but just request that, that you do not move forward with the larger fee increases because it would have a real impact on us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Benjamin.
Hello, hi. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I wanted to quickly address the league's comments on the email situation, sorry, the video situation. I appreciate Nancy speaking about that. A board member of the league who supports my opponent for the school committee election addressed the select board on the issue last night. So I appreciate the chance just to briefly mention this tonight. So I first learned of the League of Women Voters policy on videos this afternoon. These were policies that candidates were to receive well before the event. As a matter of fact, Rule 5 of the League's General Policies on Forums and Debates states, "The League will communicate in writing with candidates concerning the ground rules participating in the forum debate. The League will take reasonable steps to confirm receipt of all such communications to candidates." These things clearly did not happen. If these simple policies were shared, this situation would never have occurred. Upon learning of the policy, I took immediate steps to be in compliance. I call on the League to do the fair thing to send an email out tomorrow, like the one they sent this morning, admitting their failure to provide the policies to candidates leading to this situation. I also wholeheartedly agree with the League that everyone should view the video in its entirety and hear the candidates in their own words. So please do what the League suggests. Listen to the entire video and listen to what the candidates say in our own words. Thank you for this time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. And if we have no further public comment, then I think it's time to welcome Anna Brooks. Our recognitions. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak here. I wanted to thank Dr. Hunter and Mr. Demetri for welcoming me here and for you all for having me. I'm Anna Brooks. I'm a student at Skidmore College. I'm the first year this year. And I intend, I attended the Concord Public Schools all throughout through kindergarten. So this is super cool to be here with you all. I'm here today to present to you a book that I actually did with the Intersections Club when Mr. Demetri was the faculty advisor for the club. And it's called What Can't Kids Do? You Can Make a Stand Too. This children's book is oriented towards younger ages. Intersections in general is oriented towards motivating the community and raising awareness for different types of diversity, equity, inclusion related issues at the public schools. And the program in which Intersections, which we did this project, is called Crossroads. And Crossroads operates more within the elementary and middle schools. So this was one of our big aspirational projects once Sola and I, the co-authors of the book, started this. And the, the book overall focuses on, these are actually, here on the front are some of our closest friends, three of which are the founders of Intersections and all of which are key members of, or key members of Intersections our senior year and some of the projects which they focused on throughout our high school career. So whether that was hosting plays, creating podcasts, doing different diversity and equity, include, excuse me, diversity and inclusion related projects in the school. And our intention with this project was really just to appreciate some of the work that we had done. I think being in Intersections was, was and is still one of the very, the most educational and one of the coolest experiences that I had at Concord Public Schools in terms of having firsthand opportunities to communicate with students and understand about what the best ways to approach young people are about activism. So our soul and eyes intention with this book and our purpose with writing this book was really just to highlight some of the coolest things that we thought that our friends did. Many things which weren't even included in this book, but just appreciating the people behind causes, you know, naming them by first name and specifically stating what's so special about what they did. And obviously, what can't kids do? The, the big theme of this book is motivating young children and young adults towards activism and towards social justice, as I think many of us are. Many of us in our generation are oriented towards social justice. And I think that seeing ways in which that can happen is really important for spreading those messages in our schools. So Sola and I went about creating this book first by discussing it with Mr. Demetri and sort of allowing him, allowing us to just dream a little bit and talk it over with him. I think so are the biggest thing for us was just to get the ball rolling and just write something down on paper. Start off with a script. Sola illustrated the whole thing. And we had it published at Alpha Graphics with the help of some of the administrative staff in the Concord Public Schools. And it was really a privilege to have the opportunity to do this. I, I hope you all get the opportunity to read it. Did an amazing job with the illustrations. And I, even in college, I'm having the opportunity to read it to young kids. And it's still one of the coolest things that I've done. On a personal note, I'm really interested in education, working with young people, young kids, and navigating how social justice, identity-based lessons and inclusion look in the classroom is one of my biggest motivations in terms of pursuing this, my career into being an educator. So it was really a privilege to have this opportunity and sort of be able to open conversations with some more experienced adults about what this looks like. So I think, I think Sola would probably say the same, that it was a privilege to create this book. And I, I've shared it with my, you know, young neighbors and family members. And it's really so exciting to have the opportunity to create a piece of work like this. And I, I appreciate you all for hearing me out and listening to this project. And I hope at some point you all can have the opportunity to read this book. Or maybe just end this with a call to action with a little bit more of motivation to create more books like this and open the conversation for more books like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Anna, for sharing this with us. Yes, we, we, we have our copies of the book. And I believe there, there's a digital version around. And I'm actually going to read this for my Read Across America. I have to read to an elementary class. And so that's, I think this is a great choice for them because it makes it so approachable. It makes your work, it makes it works seem easy. But I think what you get is the spirit of when you're really committed to something, when you're passionate, like you really capture the joy that comes from hard work that, that fills the soul. So thank you. I think it's just great.
Of course. And thank you for the opportunity to present it. It's very intentional. The book ends with them all together on the page together. I think that being in a club, being on a team, working in a community is a great way to get these things started. So I appreciate our community coming to us in the form of this committee and support of this book.
Great. It's awesome. Anna, I got a, I snagged a hard copy yesterday and my third grade daughter, so it is accessible for early-ish readers, read the whole thing to me yesterday. And it was, it was beautiful and it was like a spectacular read. She got it. I got it. It was like a little bit emotional. It was really, really, it was great. And I'm so glad you did it. If you teach, you should be teaching public speaking because you're spectacular at that as well. And I just applaud all of this. I, I think it's great. I'm very, very enthusiastic supporters of you guys. This is really tremendous.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you for being here. I won't try to add on to anything my colleague said other than to say I am very grateful for the efforts you've made to share with us tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, Sola and I thank you guys for just having the opportunity to present this and create this book.
And Anna, I have to say it's like a full circle moment for me, for my mother-daughter book group that we did like so long ago. Can you talk a little bit about how Intersections got started? Just to give those of the public kind of an idea of, of your grassroots kind of movement to get that started.
Sure. So I don't, I don't want to take credit for it. Akshaya, Stephanie and Vicky were our sophomore year of high school. Went to, I believe they went to, just they had the opportunity to go to an out-of-school sort of like diversity educational opportunity. And at the time, I just remember they came back and they were like, we're doing this. And I think that, that just within our friends, it was kind of like, oh, that's just like a thing that they do. But then like they started getting projects moving. They got Mr. Demetri on board. And I think that like, even just like the monument, the momentum that they got going within our community was huge for me. And like, some of our, some of the rest of the team got on junior year. And then we started really getting things rolling with the, the club and COVID. With, you know, with the full club with COVID going on, it was harder, but going on senior year. So it was really just the motivation of a few like motivated and passionate teenagers, you know, sophomores in high school. They didn't need upperclassmen to start this club and they didn't need sort of like administrative validation to start this club. I think that even if they weren't, even if the school didn't want them to happen, they probably would have still been meeting. You know, not to, not out of any disrespect for the club, I just think that they were, excuse me, the school, I think they were just that passionate. And I think that their passion was really contagious. And I think we saw a big call to action with a lot of the social justice and race-related issues that were being discussed in early 2020. So I think that just the conversations that they started outside, we didn't even discuss the club meetings that they held, that they hold still, I believe. But the conversations that they held at Intersections were really something that I felt created social safety in our school and definitely created a necessary conversation around marginalized groups within our community and just in the United States in general. And sort of like navigating what that looks like at a predominantly white institution such as Concord Public Schools. So I think that, I hate to use the word like courageous, but I think that like perhaps the word more is just passionate. But it was from the passion of a few students who really got Intersections started and it became very contagious.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Anna. Skidmore is happy to have you. I hope you enjoy.
Send our best to Sola. Many thanks to her.
We, I will. And I appreciate it again. I appreciate all the administrative representatives who are here. Dr. Hunter, thank you again. And I hope that everyone has a great evening and stays passionate. So long.
Have a good night.
Thank you. All right. So we have a reading of the minutes from open session of December 21st, 2021 and executive session of January 11th, 2022.
Remove that the minutes just noted, open session, December 21, 2021 and executive session, January 11, 2022 be approved.
A second.
Discussion.
I thought it was very faithful rendering. Thank you, Erin, and anybody else who contributed.
Roll call.
Anderson, I for both.
Who's I for both?
Morano, Y for both.
Rainie, I for both.
And Wilson for region. All right, correspondence. At the region, we have not had any correspondence since our last meeting. And chairs and liaisons reports. Do we have any? Tracy?
I can go. Let me just pull up my notes. Sorry. Okay, so in terms of DEI, we have another subcommittee meeting tomorrow. We've had some back and forth with the DEI Commission. And I've invited them to join us at our meeting. So I'm not sure if we'll have educational representation there tomorrow or not from their committee. And we are just moving forward. I think later in the meeting, we'll talk more about training. I've met with Andrew and Paula this week. And so I guess we can just leave that till then. But again, our meeting is tomorrow. We are open to the public and it is at 11:30 on Zoom.
Okay.
Policy Subcommittee met again last week and the material is in front of the committee for this evening. I believe the next meeting is February 17.
Okay. Any other updates? No. Okay, great. So we're going to move to the superintendent's report. And can I just remind members of the, of our guests here, pub members of the public to please turn off your videos while the committee is in session. Thank you. Dr. Hunter.
Great, thank you. I'm going to just offer highlights tonight. I know you can read, read it on your own and I'm sure you did. So I wanted to focus on literacy and just share some of the work that's going on there. This is particularly focused at elementary, but the work travels all the way up through. I've been meeting with Kristin and the elementary principals. We've talked on our reading, approach to reading instruction, materials, tools, the research. We did start to look at the winter literacy data coming out of the elementary schools. You'll remember we noted some differences in this fall's data than in previous years. And we're looking for those gains and the growth. The elementary literacy specialist saw that a session to the entire K through five staff through a common Zoom all-school staff meeting earlier in January, going through reading instruction, reading research, the materials that we use and really getting us all on the same page. It's a starting point. It's not the conclusion. It's a starting point. But it was, I think, a great opportunity to, Zoom gives us a chance to do K through five across all three schools in ways that we didn't have before. We've started to look at summer school and planning on how that work can address reading instruction using the data to identify participants. So that is a work in progress right now that we can bring you as the winter unfolds into the spring. And we are working on building monthly meetings for the three elementary schools to focus on literacy with their literacy specialists, get, receive updates. And many of them participate, but talk on the district-wide MTSS and RTI committee that Kristin's leading and start to bring us towards that goal where we're going to have this nice package of literacy skills, research, the tools we're using and really have a roadmap to communicate both to staff and with parents. And we're planning on a presentation to all of you late in the spring as that work grows to conclusion and to that nice formatted and presentable approach that we know we committed to this year. I also wanted to update the work going on in student well-being. And again, Kristin's name is going to come up a lot because she's been much the lead. We are rolling out CARE-Solus, which is a platform to connect families and staff with service providers, both mental health and substance abuse. We're really excited about the opportunity it brings. We've started to primarily roll it out to staff this week and starting a little smaller scale with families. So we better understand the interactivity between the school and the family. Families can do things on their own and get on this website and start to find their providers. But we can also be a bridge that helps to make sure that we see how progress is being made and be part of that connection. So we're excited about the opportunity this is going to bring, especially when the mental health system can be so challenging to enter, manage on your own insurance, whether that pertains or doesn't, and just even access providers. The new adjustment council at the middle school funded through Esther Fund started last week. So we're really excited about that opportunity. I am working with a number of families through supportive roles to the administrators with students and families in crisis. And this, I know you heard it from Darcy, and I'll just reiterate them. The high school developed a really student-centered mid-year exam plan during a very unusual time with a lot of unusual circumstances. And I think it was a very focused effort at relieving stress for our students. And at least the overall feedback has been that that was successful. So I will leave the rest for you to peruse. A number of topics are on the agenda later. And I'm happy to answer questions if you have them.
Lori, I wonder if you could speak to a little bit more to CARE-Solus. As a pilot, does this have a mid-year budget impact?
It's very, it's nominal. I'm going to throw this to Kristin. I think it's a few thousand dollars to get us up and going. Kristin, do you want to expand on anything about that?
Yeah, so we decided to do a pilot from January to June. And it costs $4,200 to do that. It provides this placement service with, you know, 24-hour turnaround and insurance finding for um and uh insurance finding for all Concord Public and Concord Carlisle High School students, their family members, uh, the staff members, any staff member and any community member. So um right now we have uh also another group that we use called Interface. Um, and uh they haven't been uh yielding what we need from them. Our families haven't been able to use them to to find the help that they need. Uh, and our counselors who come to uh monthly mental health team meeting that I lead, um, you you know, just are giving us data that folks can't find counselors. Um, and so uh one added benefit that CARE SOLIS has is not only can they sort of match you with a counselor um who fits your specifications. Um, you know, if you want male, if you want a person of color and so forth, someone who knows about trauma. Um, but they also can um match you um with someone virtual. Um, so it really has opened up uh, you know, around the country uh who families can use, um, especially in those sort of niche, some smaller needs, um, if they're willing to um, you know, do virtual. So that it really helps us out. So I've asked all our counselors, we have about 25 counselors that work across all the schools and psychologists. And I've asked them to um try to use it with at least one or two families. So we uh make sure that, you know, the proof's in the pudding that they actually can get as counselors within 24, 48 hours. So um they not only do um therapists, regular sort of, you know, folks that people would see once a week or something like that, they also do um uh placements. So if someone needs um partial hospitalization or hospitalization or intervention in their family, so it's a much wider um system of care. Does that answer your question, Court?
Yeah, yeah, that's very helpful because anecdotally, uh, we all know that access is really a a critical issue right now, so uh, thank you for that. I think we'll all be interested in hearing how this unfolds.
And and Kristen, if the pilot is successful, what would be the impact on the 23 budget?
So uh we would use the money that we normally would um have for Interface for CARE SOLIS instead.
And so the the cost is equivalent?
They are the same, yeah.
Great, okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you. Um. If not, don't go anywhere.
No. Let's go to COVID, right? Uh, I'm gonna screen share so you can see the data I brought for you. So here we go. So it's been a an interesting few weeks. Uh, you should be able to see the history here since the middle of December. These are our cases weekly from 40 to 81 to 219 over the break to 137 as we came back. And thankfully, it is recline, is declining as we would have expected. So that it's 83, 46 last week, uh, three as of this morning, six more today. So we're at nine since Sunday, which is the slowest pace we've seen it. I would have to go back probably almost to October for that kind of pacing. So we'll see what the week brings as pool testing comes back and antigen testing starts off. But it's very encouraging and exactly what we were hoping for, um, probably even faster than we thought would happen. Um, our total case count is quite a stunning 689 cases over the course of this year. Vaccination rates, the high school and middle school are stable. I did update elementary. We're at 82% across all of K5 with another almost 5% partially vaccinated. The biggest changes since we last met um are significant in that as the cases have declined and Desi rolled out another option for us, we started to implement that this week. So we are now offering uh antigen testing at home in combination with the pool testing. That does not mean you have to do both. It means they're both available. You can opt for either or both. Uh, so that is starting this week where kids are just yesterday and today getting their antigen tests. We have elected to have the antigen tests all be administered at home on Friday. That is by design. We're supposed to set up a single day where everyone tests and reports back if positive. And so we're anxious to see how that goes. I think it feels like a step in the right direction to put tools in the hands of families and not have us need to be the the deliver, delivering provider of testing. And it feels like a shift starting to happen. In combination with that, we discontinued contact tracing with the state's support. Um, that frankly was one of the hardest tasks among the surge. Um, one of the principals said to me, it kind of collapses on top of itself, and it does because especially middle and high school kids travel and as they go day, all through a day, um, with that many cases, it almost becomes an impossible task. So there's some relief there for the nurses and the um leadership, which I think has been welcome and uh wa- warranted for sure after two long years. Uh, we've also eliminated test and stay. So if we have a case in a classroom, well, first of all, that was only for unvaccinated kids anyhow. With our numbers being so low, that was fading away for us without formal withdrawal. But now that we formally withdrawn it, um, if there's a classroom case, we just notify families. Um, at the elementary, we are notifying every classroom if there's a case. At the middle and high school, we aren't. Um, and that's by design is is part of the reduction in contact tracing. Uh, we, last week, we had gone back to three feet in the classrooms. Much of that was a combination of contact tracing. If they're at three feet, we didn't have close contacts. But also in terms of just being uh extra cautious, not knowing the Omicron transmissibility. We have grown very comfortable that school is not a super spreader event, even in Omicron. And so last week we went back to no distance, so classrooms are back operating um in an instructionally preferred way. And it was really striking to me as I walked classrooms in January, what a difference that had made as we had eliminated the spacing through the fall and to then have to go back to that distancing. Um, teachers, just literally as I would walk, would be asking how long that was gonna have to stay around. So huge impact in to kids and students to to have that not present anymore. And then uh we took our, what we're calling our false start for the elementary class, elementary uh lunchrooms and cafeterias. We started in them, lasted about a week, and then the sturge happened and went back to the classrooms. As of Monday, yesterday, we are back in the cafeterias. They are distanced pretty formally at elementary to eat lunch. And we're excited to see that come back on. So we're feeling a big push in the right direction, which is encouraging since we didn't expect to roll backwards so far. And um just looking forward to what the opportunities this winter and spring will be and hopeful movement from full COVID pandemic mode to whatever this long-term piece is gonna be um in a really thoughtful, careful, careful, gradual way. So that's where we are. Um, quite a, quite a month, to say the least, and uh glad to be on this side of it, no question.
Yeah. Thank you. I just want to note for the, for members of the public who may not be aware, but when you say that you the, you can either do, either do the antigen tests or the pool tests, that is the individual may do either or both or none. But the districts, the schools must continue to offer pool testing for now in order to qualify to get these antigen tests. Just in case there's any confusion out there.
Yeah, no, thank you. It's great to clarify.
Um. I don't want that. Yeah.
Just a big thank you. Another huge team effort across all the schools and collaboration with families, staff, custodial nurses um to make shifts the way we keep having to make them not knowing they're coming. It's just really been extraordinary collaboration. So we're grateful for all the support.
Thank you. Thank you to 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 you for for shepherding everybody through this.
Yeah. Thank you. Hopefully, uh, hopefully the rolling backward piece doesn't keep happening.
Okay, if there are no questions about uh about the COVID update, then we can talk about the Assistant Superintendent Search Timeline and Process.
Great. You want me to start that, Sarah?
Yeah.
Okay, so what we propose to you in the agenda here, the attachment. Oh, thanks. Magically, Erin does that for me. Uh, is to look at the timeline so that you can see what we're proposing again to maximize the candidate pool um after Jared's resignation. So we are actively um collecting candidates right now through the posting. So that is up and running, as you see outlined on the um document that you're looking at. We've started some of the feedback loops that we intended to build. We met with the administrative team today for some discussion of qualities and what they're hoping for and brainstorming some interview questions. We're gonna meet with the business office and Ripley staff later in the week for the same process. And by the end of the week, uh, we're hoping to have named the search committee. So Erin, do you mind scrolling down to the list of members? So this is a a draft list to get us started. Go on to page two. There you go. So here's what we're suggesting, and this is a discussion. So we're interested in your feedback. School committee member, really, we mean representative. So if two makes more sense to all of you, that's certainly fine. Um, a building principal, the CTA and CCTA presidents, I think, would be very welcome and valued members and have that teaching perspective. And representative from the business office. Uh, Russ Hughes as facilities manager, John Arenas transportation manager, and you'll see further down Bryce McKnight as food service manager. Um, we'd also suggest leadership from the unions that work under this position directly, building services, both CPS and CCHS as well as uh transportation. And then we had added, um, partly because they're co-leading the search uh in collaboration with me, uh Denise on as human resource manager, and then Kristen as assistant superintendent. So that's the membership we wanted your feedback on. Uh, we'd like to leave here tonight with some collective agreement on it so we can pull these people together and start to do scheduling with them. So uh Erin, can you go back to the timeline and we'll just quickly talk through the rest of the schedule? So this really focuses on the first phase of the process, which is really the screening and first round interviews. And I'll talk on rounds two or and three once we're through these dates. Uh, so we are proposing that the search committee meet on Monday and then into Tuesday next week, just to get organized, start to collect questions. Uh, we do always with a search committee, some very tight uh leadership on confidentiality and what the process is going to look like, especially with first round candidates. You wouldn't want that to become public in any way. And the goal would then be to hopefully be ready to interview for the 15th and 16th of February. Um, as much time as we need, almost partial or full days. Inviting the candidates uh by the end of next week. The posting closes on the ninth. So the plan would be hopefully to meet on the 10th and select our, we're targeting eight candidates. We'll have to see what the pool looks like and if that's the right number, and then invite them on the 11th to remotely, we are suggesting Zoom for the first round only uh for the 15th and 16th. That would then get us to the goal of having three finalists by the February break. I would start to be able to do reference checks. We get back in March. I would suggest booking each finalist for a full day in district, rotating among groups of people, administrators, business office, custodial staff, certainly school committee. Um, with the goal of trying to be pretty well-established in terms of a final candidate and recommended um recommendation to all of you by the middle to third week in March. So it's aggressive, but we're, we're up and running and actively keeping this moving. And we would hope for your feedback tonight on both the timeline and the search committee.
Yeah, I think for the search committee, I think it looks great. I would rec, I would, I would recommend that we have two members from the school committees. We have one for representing CPS and one representing the region.
Um, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and should we talk now about who that might be?
Just the data, obviously, the, it would be ideal if the, those who serve can be at all the meetings, both the preparatory and the interviews. There's probably a little room for us to catch people up if they can't be at all the preparation meetings. I think you'd have to be at all the interviews, or that would be really challenging.
Yeah, so Erin, you scroll back to the, to the dates and, yeah.
I'm a little, I'm a little concerned if there's a, an assumption these dates are set in stone and we have nobody on the committee yet. Um.
Well, that's why we're talking. They're not in stone.
Oh, okay. All right.
They're, they're targets to, we had to pick a date to start with because there's so many people on the committee.
Sure.
We wanted to offer a date, but.
Okay, so this is a working document. Uh, next, next question, uh, Sarah, if I might. Um, in our outreach and our recruiting, um, are we uh any more creative and assertive than we've been in the past? We know we've got uh human resource goals for the district. Um, did we do anything differently this time than we might have in previous, previous years?
We've been trying really hard to be as extensive and wide-reaching as possible. So Kristen and Denise and I have met several times. The postings are up on all the major associations from MASSS to MASC to Masbo to MMA Today. A wide number of uh different sites to post. Uh, Andrew's put them over on the sites we use for diverse candidates. So they're also posted there. Uh, Masbo has a listserv that we've been pushing it out to, which reaches all the sitting uh assistant superintendents and business managers. And did I miss anything, Kristen?
Uh, yeah, I would just say, you know, our usual school spring, but um, which gets all the people who are certified for the position, but also uh LinkedIn.
Mm-hmm.
All right, I I, if I might, I I just want to acknowledge wha- what you've done there. You didn't wait for us to ask about it. Um, you you are indeed being, I think, creative and and aggressive about getting the word out on our behalf.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good question. Thank you for asking.
Are there questions?
So I think we need to find two members to do this.
I would propose our two vice chairs. Alexa and Court.
My only question would be the, the March 7th to 11th. Would the presumption be we need to be available all five days, like nine to five?
No, the only, I'm glad you're asking so we can commit, clarify. The days that are set potentially right now is the February 7th, one to three. February 8th, three to five, if we need it, because we didn't finish on the seven. The February 10th, one to three. And then the two interview dates on the 15th and 16th. Once we get to the break, I'll be working out a schedule for people to visit the district and there'll be another set of times and dates for you, for all of you to uh be able to engage with the finalists. So those aren't set. So no, not five days, the 7th through the 11th. Some po- some pockets of that, perhaps.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the two vice chairs are are willing to serve?
Yes, and I'm I'm available.
Okay.
Yes.
And Lori, my only request, we don't need to do this tonight, but at the next meeting, um, let's revisit the end of the process and what the school committee's role and how we will um uh deal with and, you know, national law requires us to approve the appointment, you recommend. Um, so I just would be sure we have all of our um, that we're all of the same mind is how we'll execute this.
Definitely.
Good.
Great. Thank you, Alexa and Court.
Thank you. Um, Tracy. DEI professional development for school committee members.
Yes, did we uh, did we skip the representative for collective bargaining?
Oh, yes, sorry. Yep. Oh, yeah, we need, we need some more volunteers.
That's just right.
I thought I'd exhausted our. All right, uh, representatives for collective bargaining, CCHS, tutors and transportation. Uh, we're going to begin with tutors. And so I would suggest that we, again, have two people on, on each of these and one be whoever was there last year. And then somebody new to the table. But that's.
Even though I'm, even though I'm asking for work when I support what you say, I, I will say I benefited greatly from working with Wally Johnson the last time around. Someone with more experience than I, I thought it did help to a great deal.
So for tutors, we have Court, and then we need another person to work with him.
I'm not wedded to it, but I'm happy to do it.
I think since there was, it wasn't, it was a little complex. So I think your knowledge and wisdom of what occurred then would be helpful. Hopefully, this will be smoother.
Yeah, it wasn't.
I don't mind to do it.
It wasn't difficult more than as much as it was complex, because it was getting attention that on areas we hadn't looked at in depth, the way we did this past time.
Well, Alexa, you're doing transportation.
Yep. I mean, I'm just, no one's rising to the occasion.
I'm happy to do.
I'm happy to do either of them, too.
I'm, I just have a, just a question. I'm happy to do either one and learn from whoever's been on it in the past. And is there ever any, you know, if, if I might personally have a child that works with tutors, is that a conflict or not a conflict? I don't think it is, but I just wanted to ask the question.
No, it'd be the same thing if you have a child.
Right, doesn't matter. Okay. I know, that's why I was like, okay, I'm answering my own question, but I just, you know, like to be above board.
And I'll work with Alexa on transportation.
Great. Okay. All right. Well, I'm happy to do tutors.
Okay. Great.
So Jared's gonna get going pretty quickly, so you'll be hearing from him soon. Jared, do you have a timeline in mind?
I do. And I was, other thing that might be complicated is the, is the transportation, because their hours, we're hoping to maybe do that during the day. Because, okay, so that, that could still work for you, Cynthia?
Yep.
Okay, so.
It could be 80 sessions, I hope.
No, no, no. So I reached out already to the tutors. My timeline was just hoping to have, you know, the, the tutors start next week, at least ground rules. And then maybe two weeks after that, start transportation. Maybe the ground rules right before the February break, and then really hit the ground running with them when we return in March. I think, yeah, I think these, I think it'll be five to six sessions, including ground rules for each give or take. But I'm not exactly sure.
And we'll book an exact session for you in two weeks, so that you can start to talk on what you're thinking.
Okay. Wonderful.
Good.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Tracy.
On to DEI. Okay, so through the magic of Erin, do you think that Erin could maybe pull that up? Oh, I love this. Great. Okay, so I think all of you have received the proposal from Ideas. Paula and I met again today, and we talked a little bit about what those three sessions of three hours each would look like. And she does want to do three three-hour sessions. Ideally, we would like to start in March, so when the equity survey is coming in, I think the beauty of working with Paula is that she knows her district. She understands what we're looking for, where we've been, where we're going, and she can help us really dig into that equity survey. And that's going to be part of our, our training, is going to be embedded in that. So what she's proposing is that the best way to make this work is really to do three sessions every other week. And we would propose 3:30 to 6:30, and certainly, you know, I need feedback from the entire committee on this. You know, her thought is if we do four to seven or five to eight, she said typically educators start to get lost after about the 6:30 hour. So she doesn't love to do things past 6:30, but she can, you know, work with us. And so what I suggested is possibly doing it Tuesday on opposite weeks of our school committee meetings. Now, I understand we have town meeting coming up and all of that, but I think all of us kind of put Tuesday nights aside. We would also propose to do it as a school committee training, so they would not be open sessions to the public, but it would come under school committee training, which I believe we're allowed to do. And if, yep. Do you have a question? Sorry.
Tracy, I think your best bet is to check with Kari, you know, she's swamped.
Yep. Yeah, I'll check with her on that, but I thought that, you know, from the MAS C stuff that I've read, that trainings don't have to be an open session. But I'll check with her.
Yep.
Um, so, you know, we can certainly do one night, one in March, one in April, one in May, but her preference would be to go every other week. So I'm just looking for some feedback on that first, before I start scheduling. Does anybody have any ideas, thoughts, comments, questions?
Well, given our schedules, it's going to have to be very date specific and probably not easy to pull it off.
Right.
But we can do it with careful consultation.
Tracy, were your thoughts to meet over Zoom?
Yes, it will be over Zoom. They are not meeting in person yet. That is, and Paula will be doing our training. She, I did ask her that, if, if they were maybe in person, they're not quite doing it. They do have some educators that are, but she is not. And then the other educator with her will be Ed Burns, who's also done some work with the district. So I think he has familiarity with our teachers. But I guess, my first question is, is 3:30 even doable for people, 3:30 to 6:30? And if it's a total non-starter, then I'm just going to go back to the drawing board with her.
Well, the only thing I'm thinking is, um, that's a long session. Right? Three hours.
Yeah, you know what, it really, we talked a lot about that, because I talked about trying to break it down, and really, that is the preference, that, that, that is what it is. And, and I think that her thought is, you know, it's just you, you can't get in-depth enough if you don't have a longer session. And she said, and sometimes that session isn't actually long enough. So this is really on the guidance for what they would like to do.
Right, but we all know, it's not necessarily 6:30, but you, after an hour and a half, people are exhausted.
Yeah, and I, well, I think she builds, she definitely builds breaks in, and there are breakout rooms. So there's definitely some, you know, it's not just staring at a screen for three hours. There's going to be readings to do, there's going to be some writing to do. So, you know, I.
I mean, I could talk to you offline, it's just for me.
Yep.
I would need to leave work, unless I'm staying at work until seven o'clock at night.
Oh, no, 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 well, that, well, that's what I said.
Okay, but then I need to, yeah, so we could talk offline, it's just.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, no, we would do it at a random time that's going to work, you know, work-wise for people. So if 3:30 is not a good start time, I mean, I'm not married to that by any means. And if we want to do five to eight and have, you know, dinner while we're working, that'd be great, too.
Okay, well.
Maybe if everyone could just email me their preference for.
Right, we could just work out the logistics, right?
Yeah, so let's just start with Tuesdays. If we can start with Tuesdays in March, on the opposite Tuesday of our school committee meetings, if you can look at your schedules for that, and just email me offline about your availability, and then we'll start to work from there.
Yeah, and we just have to look at like town meeting hearings and things like that that pop up. Yeah.
And I'm not sure, you know, I don't know if people are opposed to a Saturday, to do three Saturdays or not. So just think about that. I won't put you on the spot tonight. I know, it's a weekend, but just a thought.
Tracy, if I might.
Yes.
More important to me than when is what? And the first 14 bullets have always been valuable to me. They will be more valuable to me than before. But for me, number 15 is the new one. And I can only guess what might occur, but just based on the bullets, I worry that what's going to be most new and hopefully of significance to me is likely to be short-changed if these 15 bullets represent how we're going to spend our time and energy. And I wonder, I wonder if there is any opportunity to shift from the personal development to the school committee leadership development and change the, the balance at all, based on what this implies.
So I, you know, Paula and I talked extensively about that. It's really more professional development, not personal development. And so the, this is what she takes our educators through. And she said, honestly, this is a 25-hour class. And so what they're doing is, you know, they're gearing this towards school committee, and obviously there are net steps, next steps that are built in there. But this is, in order to get to that part, we really do have to start in the beginning and have those discussions. And so that is part of what we're committing to do, and we're committing to DEI. That's what we're committing to do. We're, we're taking the same road that our educators are also taking, that we're requiring of them when they come to the district. So I certainly understand the next steps, and I do think that more of our next steps, and, you know, I don't know if Andrew's still with us, but Andrew's going to be very much part of our next steps and in our development of the strategic plan, that we'll talk a little bit more about tomorrow. So that's going to be more on our own. So, you know, I look at our training as what we should be doing, and then, and next, what are we going to do? And that's going to be our launching point, and then Andrew's going to kind of take us through that process.
All right, but I would offer up that some modest sensitivity to these issues were instrumental in this school committee bringing a DEI director forward. That is not, we, I grant you, we need to do it, but I, I would suggest that there has been some work that preceded this. And the, the best evidence to me is our commitment to bring in a DEI director and do it the way we did it. So anyway, you know, I hope, I hope there'll be some time to the school committee's areas of concern, influence and control.
And I do think that we can talk more about that tomorrow at our meeting as a subcommittee, and that would be a great starting point, just to give that to Paula, and then she can give us a little bit more in-depth of, you know, what her course looks like. But I, I want to be cognizant that this is the course that she's bringing to us, and then we're going to have to put the work in and move forward from there. So, you know, let's definitely talk about it more tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
Yep, no problem. Thank you. Any other questions, comments or feedback on that?
No, thank you. Thank you, Tracy. I think when, when Dr. Martin first described it, I mean, she really, she really focused on that this is like her, her knowledge of our district, right? Is really a wonderful asset to be bringing to us in this work. And, and it will, it will distinguish, I think, her, her, her curriculum from, uh, from, from other ones that might be out there. And so I'm, I'm glad that we're doing the same, that we're doing the same work that the, the teachers, that the, you know, that we're on the same, the same page, the same language, everything, as our educators. So.
Yeah, and I did, I did talk to Paula a little bit about, you know, if it would be a possibility for me personally, like to join in one of those educator courses, which we do have that option, we would never do it in our district, but we could join another district. And she said, school committee members do that before, if anyone's interested in that, to really take that full 25-hour course. And there's a lot more reading, a lot more writing and responses that you're going to have to do. So it's definitely going to be a course, which would be great. So I think that's it.
Okay. Great. Okay, thank you. The 2022-23 draft calendar.
Well, I think that's me again with Lori.
Yes, we'll co-present this. I'm happy to say it was one of the easier calendars over the last few years because of where Labor Day falls and some other pieces that were a little more straightforward. So if you look just quickly at a high level, and Tracy, away in as we go, we're proposing staff return on the 29th of August, Monday, and have two days of professional development with the students returning on the 31st of August. Contractually, we are always off on the Friday before Labor Day, so that would continue. Going into October, we would look at early release, which is the first of the three afternoons where we do the PD paths. So the high school, it's one of their four early releases. For the middle school, it means they get out at 11:30 instead of 1:30, just on these particular days. High school would have conferences at the end of the month on the 28th. When we get into November, we piggybacked the elementary conferences with Veterans Day, so it's a four-day weekend for those families. And then the other holidays are as would typically happen. Middle school conferences, we slated for December 8th. That corresponds with their trimester turnover, which is similar to how we do elementary and high school, which is closer to the quarter turnover. And then the second path would be the December 14th for the early release afternoons. And then into the break, which would start with a half-day on the 23rd of December and go all the way through the 2nd of January. January, then later, there's a PD day for the middle and high school, which correlates with the semester turnover at the high school, similar to what we had a week or so ago. February, the third early release day is there on the first. The rest is essentially the break. March has the fourth and final of the release days for the high school and otherwise a very clean calendar. The April 4th is the second day of conferences at the elementary schools, and the vacation follows two weeks later. May is straightforward, leading up into June with graduation slated for the 3rd of June, 2023. Students' last day would be the 14th. Staff on the 15th. We are now very cognizant of the Juneteenth holiday and that, just being aware of it, because obviously, snow gets pushed out a day if we have to make days up at the end. So it's pretty straightforward, it's your first reading, so we can take any feedback. We build this just as a reminder in collaboration with the CTA and CCTA. Tracy was there. Anything you want to add, Tracy?
No, I think it was really straightforward. I did like the November K to five conference day around Veterans Day, because I think that that is least disruptive. The only other thing I would say is that first day of school K8 will be an early release day. And I think that the K to five teachers actually welcome that, because it's kind of a nice transition, especially for our youngest students coming in, and that, you know, that Friday is off.
Right. Any questions or feedback? We met twice with the teachers and felt it went quite smoothly.
Thank you. That's good. Okay. If there's no discussion about that, then we can go to cost sharing, Ripley capital improvements.
Yeah, I'll queue it up, and then Jared will take it from there. This is follow-up, we have, when we've talked with all of you, especially at CPS, because every time we'd look at the capital plan and the proposed expenditures out of FY23 with the town manager's budget, we do have Ripley improvements slated. So we did a, did a good job of looping the Carlisle members in. And at our, one of our last meetings, we were asked to follow up. Jared and I met with Tim Goddard, Carlisle's town administrator. He asked if we would propose a formula. I think it's worth noting that as you hear what Jared's proposing, it's not really our formula to agree with or disagree with, or even bargain, because it's the town manager's capital funds at CPS that is town funds. So we want to turn this over to the town manager, interim town manager and select board. The same would be true in Carlisle, where there's no mechanism through the regional agreement or process for any contribution from Carlisle to, you know, subsidize Ripley improvements. So the vehicle likely is not through the school committee, but we wanted to give you our first pass at Ideas before we handed them off to the town leadership. So Jared, you can talk through what you put together.
Great, yes. So, yeah, I was asked to put this together sort of as a recommendation, how I saw it, how I saw it working. So just to quickly go through this, Ripley is 57,000 square feet. In the 50,000 square feet, we have the pre-K mods, as well as Case Collaborative rents some space from us, and the gymnasium. I took that square foot. in the gymnasium. I took that square footage and I backed it out and that would automatically be applied to Concord. That's about twenty-five point seven percent or um, just over um, fourteen thousand square feet. Or just under fourteen thousand square feet. So that remains forty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight square feet. Uh, I then took the October first enrollment from K to twelve, which was thirty-two seventy-one of that, uh, approximately or two, two thousand nine hundred and ninety of those students were conquered or ninety-one point four percent. Uh, Carlisle had two hundred and eighty-one percent, uh, two hundred and eighty-one students or eight point five nine percent. And then I took the Ripley projects over the next three years. Um, in F Y twenty-three, uh, three hundred and forty thousand, in F Y twenty-four, seven hundred thousand, in F Y twenty-five, three hundred and fifty thousand. I used the October first twenty, um, twenty-one enrollment and I backed out the pre-K case in portion. So in F Y twenty-three, that eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty would automatically be applied to Concord. And then the one seventy-nine and the eighty-nine, uh, those are subject to change with the enrollment, uh, uh, on my formula. Um, recommendation. So then I did difference in F Y twenty-three is two hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty. Ninety-one point four one percent of that, uh, is two hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and twenty. And then the eight point five nine is the twenty-one seven. And then I applied the same formula for F Y twenty-four and F Y twenty-five. And then I took the three-year totals and the last box, um, and applied the conquered portion for pre-K case in the gym. So for F Y twenty-three, it's about three hundred and eighteen thousand for Concord, twenty-one seven for Carlisle. And again, applied that same formula for F Y twenty-four and F Y twenty-five. And happy to answer any questions or if someone wants to make a recommendation on how they would like to see it. Alexa?
Um, so just so I'm certain. So the only thing that's a little bit different is, is the backing out of the K, the, the three spaces that then affect how the formula is applied.
Correct.
Right? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, good. That's my question.
Yep.
And I, I think it makes sense to do a unique formula for this, given that it is a unique uh, situation. And this is between town managers, right? This is not, uh, this isn't a regional conversation. This isn't a CPS uh, issue, so.
So I think what would happen, because there's nothing obviously in the regional agreement, is if the two town managers did agree to this, Carlisle would essentially write a check to Concord and they would apply it against the, you know, the nine hundred thousand dollars, um, that we get under the town manager's budget for the capital improvements.
You think it's worth noting, we, we ended up unexpectedly talking with the Carlisle Finance Committee about this. We thought we were there for the road and they were, had heard what we were um, talking about at our meeting. And so it came up and we had talked with Tim, who had talked with them. So I think, you know, the concern, and it's not a surprising concern from Carlisle, is just what precedent this might set and any other unplanned contributions they're going to be asked for. So I'm appreciative of that conversation, as I'm sure all of you are. And expect that'll be part of the discussion is that, just like the numbers are.
Jared, thank you very much for doing this work. I appreciate it.
And we'll hand it over to the town managers.
Yeah.
Great. Let me know if you need me to do. Thank you.
Thanks. Court policy.
Okay, so uh, our first read is for concussion regulations. Um, there is a preceding J J I F athletic concussion, which is uh, something we approved prior. It's a introductory kind of statement. We can take a look at that again if you wish, but that one having been uh, reviewed and approved somewhat recently, we didn't go back to it. Instead, we dug in deeply on this regulation one. Um, and after a considerable amount of work, it yielded very, very few changes, actually, uh, fewer than we anticipated. Um, I'll give you an example, um, what reads regulations now used to read information, not very significant. And when we walk through this document, uh, the M G L reference remains unchanged. Uh, this first page remains unchanged. And stop me anywhere you want here. Uh, as we move to uh, item D four, I believe it is, and we're heading in that direction now. Um, uh, what you'll see in the middle of the page, second paragraph, any athlete who is symptomatic but stable is allowed to go home with their parents, guardians, following the head injury. That sentence and the A B C that follow are new additions that we adopted from uh, M A S C. So we pulled those in to the existing policy. With the exception of that one big addition and the minor title change, anything else was a minor cleanup. Uh, if a reference to athletic trainer uh, was initials A T one place and uh, uh, something else, somewhere else, it might have been cleaned up uh, for clarity. But again, nothing of any substance other than this addition. Uh, also, I think that the uh, subcommittee uh, will share this with me, Tracy, looking at you. Um, that we were consistently impressed that uh, Aaron Johnkis, the athletic director, and also speaking for the athletic trainer and the lead nurse, uh, gave us a great deal of confidence that uh, in practice, these uh, uh, policies uh, are, are being followed really faithfully, really, really effectively. That came through very nicely.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. And if anyone has had a student or knows of one with a concussion, they do take it rather seriously. So it's um, good to know that they are putting the policy into practice.
So we will have a second read of this. Uh, please do look at it. If you haven't done so already, please look at it, uh, top to bottom because policies uh, uh, look like a lot of paper until they become highly relevant and then we, then we live by them. So we need to go in with our eyes open before we adopt any changes, even, even if I frame them as minor. Any questions or comments or concerns to send back to the subcommittee on this one? All right, uh, again, I want to thank the business office, um, and uh, certainly want to thank Aaron Johnkis in particular, but also uh, Lisa and the new athletic trainer.
Patty.
Patty, thank you for your participation. Thank you. So we move then to the facility use policy and the uh, this one has two pieces to it. Uh, one is this rather general statement. And you know that uh, we've added to this, uh, not number one, a number of links, so that this becomes a uh, single, single source for a lot of information through these links, as well as the content of the document itself. And uh, uh, we proposed to you that the uh, policy in order to support the business office and their support in turn for people who want to use the schools for their own activities. Um, that we make it very clear that February one is when the business office will take a first look at summer, uh, summer requests, because those are usually pretty significant um, for the, for the groups looking for school space. As we move along on this, uh, we have a bit of a reword on the priorities. The M A S C didn't really fit us. It was uh, perhaps a little too, too generic. So you now have it read, school, town government, uh, parent, teacher, local nonprofit and everybody else. The references, we checked all the references in M G L, they have not changed. Maybe the, uh, there's been a change in the legislation, but not in the reference numbers and not in what it brings to us for guidance. Uh, so we have this repeated again. This is where the regulations, where we get the detail. So we repeat the priorities, we repeat the legal references. And then we point out to you a new section. Uh, we have a agreement between the regional school district and the town of Concord, twenty-fourteen, and the regional school district and the town of Carlisle, twenty-fifteen, uh, to the effect that uh, town, adult and youth sports, uh, will not be charged for outdoor access. Um, and so we put these words in, uh, these policies are superseded by agreements enforced between the towns. And we have links to those very documents. Now, how do we interpret um, town uh, youth and adult sports? Uh, these are organizations that uh, serve anybody within their stated activity area. If it's volleyball, it's volleyball. If it's uh, uh, girls, it's girls and so on. Um, uh, open to everybody in the district, fitting that, that definition for the services they provide. Um, and uh, typically, these are uh, registered nonprofit organizations as well, all of, all of which uh, have a long history with us. This then is new, uh, because we were doing a, a twelve-year catch-up on the fees with the intent of A, reasonable cost recovery, um, assurance that there was no uh, private profit subsidized by uh, public entities, uh, but B, that it was in line with other districts. So the business office did their analysis of other districts before they brought their recommendations to us. Um, uh, C, we want the uh, fees and the policies to uh, not be a big incentive to come to Concord as compared to somewhere else. Uh, nor do we want it to be a big disincentive for a group that should be here. Um, and as such, we asked, uh, and administration was very supportive of this idea uh, of a frequent user discount, for lack of a better term. And after wrestling with it a bit, what does that mean? It means that uh, in a single rental transaction, you know, a bundled activity of forty hours or more, fifteen percent comes off the top for the rental. We can't control the building service costs. They are what they are and they get passed along. And then a greater discount that of twenty-five percent, uh, when that uh, number hits eighty in that transaction. Why do we say single transaction? Because uh, forty independent visits to the business office for one-hour rentals would be pretty onerous for the business office. So we're asking these get bundled for efficiency on the business office and such that the, the cost reduction uh, actually represents the reduced nature of the work on the part of the business office. Moving along, this again, this is our second read. The supervision, no additional edits made. The restrictions, no additional edits made. Um, we've got linkages there, uh, right to the town of Concord and uh, you'll see board of health there and food service and so on. Moving along, but please stop me, uh, folks, if you wish, as we go along here. And continue if you would. Thank you. So let's see, back up a little bit, um, we'll go to uh, we'll go to dances. Um, we're always thinking about the risk avoidance and uh, how we can support other groups, but have the uh, the paramount uh, requirement that of schools ready to go the following morning, uh, undamaged. Uh, and that's captured here in dances where we uh, will insist on uh, proper footwear. And what does that mean? It means appropriate for the surface that they're on. Uh, raffles are indeed allowed, but uh, have permitting with the town pursuant to state law. So we point people in that direction. We're saying uh, eight, ten o'clock, uh, we want you out of there, but uh, the superintendent may, may waive that. So we would elevate that to the superintendent again with the idea that the building service staff uh, need cleanup times, secure the building time, uh, such that the building is open at dawn the next day. Uh, the liability, we, we went through this, we've added the workman's comp reference. Um, and what else? The, this really is consistent with current practice that uh, the region and the schools are named as an additional insured policy and a certificate is uh, presented to the business office. Custodial coverage. Use of gymnasiums, use of fields. So we have certain fields at the high school that are under the jurisdiction of the town of Concord. Um, and uh, fewer number of fields uh, that are under our jurisdiction. We wrestled with the idea of tennis courts. Uh, do we even offer this up because the availability is so very limited and we don't want contentious uh, issues arising from competition for that space, uh, but there is a little bit of space. So we did, uh, put it out there and we'll ask the business office to do the usual good work to, to manage uh, these requests as they come in. Um, A V, we've got that capacity, um, should groups need it. We have the uh, authority to cancel events, uh, if we have to. You know, a notable example would be uh, um, this past weekend. Um, you know, would we spend uh, many, many thousands of dollars uh, to clear, clear a building for a small rental? Um, the answer is no, we, we couldn't. It'd be cost prohibitive. Uh, and we have the catch-all that the uh, superintendent of schools has uh, the authority to impose additional requirements. What might that mean? It might mean uh, a police detail is required or a police sign-off uh, on whether or not it's required uh, is necessary, given the, the public safety implications of an event. I'm just making that up, but it could imagine that's one of many examples that uh, we could come up with. Moving along. Okay, uh, we do not uh, require a deposit. We do not require an advance payment and the reason is that our relationships with these groups and their relationships with the business office are such that uh, that isn't something that uh, uh, has been an issue, nor do they predict it will be. This is the uh, fee schedule and this is uh, what we heard earlier this evening is going to be difficult uh, for some folks. Um, that there is an effort to bring this up-to-date from two thousand and nine. Um, I do have every confidence that the business office did indeed do their uh, their homework with other districts, which has actually been a time-honored practice anytime these get a review. I will say, um, that I think it'd be wise to have the policy subcommittee discuss with the business office every two or three years, what these fee schedules look like. Not anticipating uh, uh, the need for changes necessarily, but rather to not let us get uh, you know, chronically out of date the, the way uh, that we are right now. Uh, working our way down this list, uh, we've made some clarifications. So it's very clear that the high school auditorium is not the same as the San Blan auditorium. Uh, that our gyms are of different sizes and the different uh, desirability. Um, the custodial fees, uh, I will note those uh, will change automatically in, in the sense that uh, they need to keep up with any contractual changes. So it's driven by contract, not driven by policy. And so we want to make that big clarification here, even though this is embedded in policy, personnel uh, rates are designed to recover costs. rates are designed to recover costs. And therefore they they change. We see the field use fees with more clarity than you've seen in the past. And the other miscellaneous you've seen before, actually, the piano has always been there. The volleyball indeed has been there. Parking lot, I believe, is relatively new. And what else have we got? And then we've got a repeat of the different groups knowing full well that the the town agreements are also in play here. So I might ask any comments from my colleague on the policy subcommittee? And then we'll turn to the school committee for questions.
Sure, I think that, and I apologize because I did miss one of our meetings. I just had a question on the fee schedule because I had sent an email to Jared's office. On what would it look like? How much does that frequent user discount? What does that look like? For some of our frequent users, because I guess as I'm thinking about this, you know, I'm thinking about all different groups that are in and certainly not just two that spoke tonight. But I do think that there are some other groups that use our gyms, like I'm thinking about volleyball and think about basketball, some of the feeder sports programs to our high school programs when they try and run camps for the kids. I think I think field hockey also does one. I want to think about what that looks like for them. If Jared, did you have any numbers on that?
I did, but really the only two right now that we saw that would hit that threshold was Target and the Star Camps. So based on their numbers, I think it was from FY19. It would be about a $3,900 savings for Target and a $5,700 savings for Star Camp. And I think those were the only two that we saw would qualify.
Okay.
And I'll triple check that.
Okay.
So Jared, with that, oh, maybe it's not my turn. Sorry, I'll ask later.
No, I just, I just wanted to get some hard numbers on what a frequent user would look like and what it looked like before versus what this does. And recognizing that, you know, these are going to go into effect on September 1st. So it wouldn't be for this summer, but it would start September 1st and just looking that. So I wouldn't want us to have any unintended consequences of our decision here.
And the business office knows full well that we we do want information coming our way. They're going to be on the front line of this. Alexa.
Um, so I had a couple of questions, Court. Somewhere much higher in the policy, you talked about the business office looking at the upcoming summer in February. What exactly do you do you did you mean by that?
What what I mean is that a an organization that wants to use use the schools for their summer programming for first round of consideration should have information in Mr. Stanton's office by February 1.
Okay, okay, not commencing on February 1.
So that they all get a first look. It's it's basically an equity issue. That the business office would be able to look at a pool of them and not kick off one, one week and another, another week and have a group get closed out. Now, every potential user knows get your application in so that it's there for that February 1 opening. So you have no more or less opportunity to get get accommodated.
Sure, I do note that some of these frequent users, just by virtue of the fact that my family is engaged with them. Do put out enrollment for their summer programs way before February 1, would that affect their ability to do that?
So we, this is easy to change. This date went in because the business office says this is in keeping with their the practices they've seen these groups follow in the past. With the expectation that it's going to be the same users with few exceptions each year. So again, the the date is not so important. Rather, the communication of that date for purposes of everybody getting a fair shake.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of their, the different groups, especially the frequent user camp groups. Just dovetailing it with their existing practices. Because I know enrollments generally for those commence, I think, in as early as December. So just with that, so because if they applied for the space for the following summer. Would they, would that prohibit them from being able to communicate with families in advance of February 1? Because ostensibly, if we're waiting till February 1, they wouldn't be assured that they have the space. Is that right? Or am I reading this wrong?
No, I I get your point. This date was suggested to us because it's the date that represents what's actually happening anyway. So it's a it's a it's formalizing it. Am I stating it correctly, Jared, that this actually is in keeping with the way this clock runs in your office?
Correct.
By virtue of when these requests come in?
Yeah.
I do think I'll just add to that because we had a lot of scheduling issues four and five years ago. And Aaron Johncous and the town, we really all worked together in the leaders of the camps that you've heard from tonight. I think there's some routine brutalization to it now that we're a few years into settling how we all equitably get access. So that may be some of why you're seeing stuff go out earlier because we're pretty well established in being able to share, share the facilities with, even if it hasn't been formally approved. That's up for you to decide if you want to tighten that up, but I think that's been our mode of operation up until now.
And also, let's let's consider times when there were exceptional things happening. The business office, even even prior to Jared's arrival here would go to these known summer users if we had building renovations or something going on to work alternate locations early. And that's because these relationships are longstanding.
So I'm kind of just overthinking it.
Well, good, good, yeah.
Okay.
No, I don't. I don't know that you are because you're you're hitting on something that we make work right now. But do you want to write it down is the question?
Yeah, um, and then my next question about the single transaction. So you mentioned that the days that the transaction must be singular, but the do the days need to be sequential? So like
No, no.
Like I could book 40 hours all over the place, but if I did it at once, I'm considered a high user.
That's correct.
Okay.
Because you're doing one, one agreement for those set dates. It could be five consecutive days, eight hours a day. It could be Tuesday nights from here until whatever.
Okay. Um, and then?
And again, it's the attempt here is to reflect the actual workload of that business office where if they have an efficiency, the savings should accrue to the user.
Okay.
So the the unknown, the unknown, the unknown to this relative to the gentleman who spoke on public comments is will this necessitate a consolidation of some of the indoor space? Because that's where the costs lie. And I can't speak to that other than to say it's it's an open question. I recognize that. I think the personnel, excuse me, the policy subcommittee certainly recognizes this, as does the school committee and the administration.
I guess so to that end, Jared, you mentioned the two camps that seem to be our highest users, right? And you mentioned their savings, which in the whatever it was, $4,000 and almost $6,000 range. What, if you factor in those savings, what ends up being the net increase? Approximately?
Right, and it's funny you ask that because I was just thinking that. So really 25%, well. So that it would be if it's about 25% higher, right? Because because so this was based off of, so if we have, that's a good question. Let me come back to you on that.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. I don't need to see it tonight, but I'd be curious just to see.
Yeah, I was thinking that. That's a great question. So I was thinking that what the actual, because they're saving 25%, right? So I I was thinking in my head, it's a 25% increase, but that might be too simple.
Right.
I think it is because I think the increase is more than 20.
Yeah, because they said 100 before. You're right. It's it's it's.
Yeah, I think the increase is like 400%, right?
Yeah, so 300. So it's, yeah. I will get you that.
Okay, thanks, Jared. Cool.
The courts on page seven, where you define the fields. The upper grass field is ACC field.
That's correct. Yes, the one to the, what is it? North northwest of the turf field?
Yeah.
Yeah, correct.
And that's Cynthia, that's the lacrosse practice field. Is that the one? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you know, kids don't have to schedule the wall, but that field is a pretty good field. Especially if you want to use grass instead of turf. So.
And a lot of, actually, a lot of the track events, the CC track events happen up there.
Yep.
So it is used, yeah. Court, does it make sense for us to talk about this one more time with Eva? In terms of?
Entirely up to you. I'm 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 comfortable that we did the difficult work. I'm comfortable that this was not going to go down well for anybody who's got to be on the receiving end of a 12 year catch up. I did my own calculations. This was not a across the board percentage increase by any means. So I went through each of the business office calculations and see a range anywhere from 0% to 25%, 13%, 74%. A middle school gymnasium goes down by 42%. So these these corrections are all over the place. So in the aggregate, what does it mean for any particular user? That's going to be a unique question attributable to that, you know, that relates to that particular user. If we, in fact, on an overall basis, have come in at around a 25% increase that I think comports pretty nicely with the CPI, which is just under 30% for that period of time. So we're we're trying to keep level with our our actual costs. But again, in, you know, just to be accurate for everybody listening, this was not an across the board percentage increase that got rolled through all the fees. This was a lot of 12 year corrections that even referenced facilities accurately this time. Distinguishing a middle school, for example, from a a high school gymnasium is one exam or or auditorium, for example. So up to you, you know, up to you if you don't want to move it.
I guess, I guess, um, well, I missed, I missed one meeting and Eva wasn't there at our last meeting. So I feel like maybe, I mean, I hate to drag this on one more time, but maybe just one more discussion with the three of us to kind of hash that out and maybe get the answer to Alexa's question from Jared. Like what that difference would be? And just talk about that because I know that you did all that work on the spreadsheet, which was great. But I I didn't know at our last meeting, and I probably should have brought it up if I had missed that portion of it when I missed that other meeting. So just a thought, but.
So if if you choose to do that, my request would be that we meet sooner, not later. We've been at this for about two years now.
Yeah, I know. I'm sorry.
We got to move on to some other, some other work. We've got a lot of policies that demand our attention. So we, with your indulgence, should you not move it tonight? And I think your colleagues will probably follow on if you choose not to move it. Let's try to meet perhaps next week so that we can come back to the next school committee meeting. Perhaps with a recommendation.
If we could do that and have maybe a mini meeting as we did last week, I think that would be good. If ever we're here tonight, I think I'd feel a little bit more comfortable moving it. But just because she's not represented here and I don't want to speak for her either.
And the only thing I'll say, which is confusing, is we did not have any fees for the fields. So that was I I don't even know how those were assessed.
So that's always going to look rough for anybody on the receiving end of stated fees. Yeah, and and a little murky to us perhaps, yeah. But I think they're very clear now and I think the business office, and I'm I'm confident that they they did the work and these are in line with other other like facilities and other like districts that are surrounding us.
Yeah. Yeah, so so I apologize for belaboring it, but if we could get a meeting sooner rather than later for next week and then we'll definitely be ready at our next meeting to move that. I would just feel better if ever we're here.
You know me, I'm very fond of meetings.
I know. Thank you. It was so efficient last time too, though. We had a great meeting last time. You know, we were quick. It's good.
All right. Thank you, Court. Thank you for walking us through very, very diligently through that.
And I should say, definitely work that needed to be done. So I appreciate the work that's gone into this from everybody. And so I I don't mean to, you know, push it along a little bit, but I certainly appreciate the work that's been done.
And I think that, you know, as Court noticed by looking at each of the fees, you can see how deliberate the business office was with their calculations that they really were thoughtful about every single space. And since it wasn't just an across the board, it's it's some up, some down, some flat. So I really shout out to the business office for for taking such a deep dive into that. Yeah. Um. So with that, I think we are at the variance report.
So Jared's going to share with you where we are in the FY22 regional budget.
And do you want me to share it or do you want to share it? I can share. Perfect. Okay, great. So in your packets, you have the variance report by the 100 function as well as the 1,000 function. I told you a couple of meetings ago that we're sort of doing a bottom line budgeting right now. But as you can see, we're pretty imbalanced. We have an unencumbered balance of one, am I looking at the wrong report? Yes, I am. We have an unencumbered balance of sorry about that.
Three, 3.7 is it?
Yeah, 3.7 million. Now, some of that is health insurance that's a little hard to encumber. So that inflates it. Vehicle replacement as well. But we are, we are tracking well. The out of district tuitions you can see there is in the negative. That's because we have to do some reclassifying the circuit breaker and IDEA when the when that money comes in. So we are, we're really tracking well. And I usually don't know exactly where we're going to end until usually around mid April, give or take. But this is in line pretty much from from two years ago. I will say, or a normal year FY19. So yeah, we're we're tracking really well. And any specific questions on this?
Jared, Jared, could you? Jared, Jared, could you, um, explain 1230 to us? Was that?
Other district admin, yes. Let me pull up the backup on that.
And, and, you know, next meeting is fine with me. I don't want to, you know, put you on the spot. There's a lot of detail here, so don't feel compelled to answer it tonight.
Great. So that was the answer out, but let me pull exactly what, what that was. Can I get back to you on that, Court?
Yeah, they're perfectly fine, thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No, no, no worries, no worries. Can you speak to professional development, 2353, 55, 57? Did the sub savings give us an opportunity we moved on for providers? Or did we have a greater need for providers independent substitutes?
Yeah, that's a line, so sometimes it's hard for us to keep track of subs for PD versus regular subs sometimes. So we budget that 16,000, and oftentimes we use that to reclassify or, or, or transfer out to the regular sub line. Because it's only 16,000, I did feel comfortable moving that and not tracking it to the 2355. But we haven't used any, we haven't used much, if any, I will say, of the PD sub. So basically, what's that for? If, if a teacher goes out of district for professional development or has to miss a class and we hire a sub for that, we hit that line. I don't think it's really has been hit since the pandemic.
Hmm, good, thank you.
But it's good to keep that, truthfully, it's good to keep that 16,000 still in there. Because I'm sure that will come back, maybe even next year.
Yeah.
And, and as to 2357, did we get more ambitious because we could or because we had to? And that's, and don't, there's, don't try to interpret what I said, there's no value judgment there.
In what regards the?
Well, we moved, we moved another 20,000 over. So my question is, was this because we could better address our needs because the money was available? Or because there was a indisputable need that we hadn't earlier budgeted for?
Right, that's what I'm thinking. Let, let me also get back to you, because that's, it's made up of a few different lines, that 2357. So let me, let me get back to you on that. Usually what happens, if one line goes over, what I do do is I don't like any of our lines to, to be in deficit. Usually I will take a transfer from the function that it's in. But for this reason, you can see I probably took it from something else, but I have to go into that specific line to see.
No problem. What you're showing us here represents thousands of decisions by hundreds of people over a number of buildings over a number of months.
So yeah, it's about 400 lines, and you're seeing it by 55.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. Sorry I wasn't able to answer those.
Oh, no, no, I didn't expect it, no, but I, you know, I, I, I'm not trying to embarrass you. I'm just putting the questions forward and in the public, giving us time to learn about them is, is what we need, no, no need to jump at it immediately, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? If not, then I think we can, thank you, Jared. We can go to the budget updates.
So I'll open that. Following our last regional budget discussion where you voted, the governor put out his cherry sheets so we could see what they were thinking. Due to some enrollment increases and inflation, the revenue number for state aid for the regional district was higher, significantly higher than we had budgeted. So we wanted to bring that back to you for discussion, given that it was so much higher. And propose to you, recommend to you that we increase our revenue number, which, as Jared will talk you through the numbers, will lower the assessments to the towns. And I think we'd all be more than happy to come in under guideline and help them benefit from the revenue that we didn't expect. So Jared, you want to just talk us through the numbers?
Yep, so we got a little bit over 225,000 in chapter 70 money. The regional transportation number, chapter 71, is actually at 717 right now. We have 725. That's based on numbers from two years ago, believe it or not. So I'm comfortable leaving that 725 in there for chapter 71 and having that little bit of cushion in chapter 70 to offset it in case it does not go up. So what we did is we took that 225 and we increased our chapter 70 offset from the 29 number that we had before to the 3,197,882. And what that did is it didn't change anything, but the assessment number is down at the bottom. It doesn't change the, the budget we're asking for. It just decreases the assessments by 225,000. And based on the, the enrollment split, that was the, the changes to both Concord and Carlisle.
Good news. That's our recommendation.
Yep. And, and just so you all know, and you probably already know this, but for the public, if for some reason the revenue is less than what we get, it can be made up in two ways. One would be through just the E and D reserve that we have. Or the other way, we're just, you know, if, if tracking next year and you're thinking that there's going to be less revenue than anticipated, you would just leave that positive balance in the, in the, in the general fund.
Is there any chatter about legislative threats to this increased recommendation?
No, in fact, I, I think a lot of us are very surprised in the increase for chapter, uh, chapter 70. I budgeted 3%, which is pretty standard and safe. And it was, I want to say 9%. So I wouldn't anticipate that year after year, but it's, it's, it's great news for, for right now. And usually the numbers don't go down after the governor's budget comes out. So that's good. I think these numbers are going to hold, and if anything, you could get a little bit more.
Good, thank you.
Great, so we will return to this. There is a budget, is there a vote coming up right next, if you're ready? Yeah. I don't mind framing that a little bit, Sarah, because you, the warrant had closed in Carlisle. So we talked with that, it doesn't close in, in Concord until tomorrow. We had talked with Carlisle today just to understand how to net, how to move these pieces around so we don't all get very confused. So they haven't printed a warrant. They were pretty happy to hear us offer what could come in at a lower number and be willing to work with that new vote. So I think we're all synced up. If you vote this tonight, that both communities will be in the same place.
Great. So with that, is there a motion to vote to approve? Budget.
Do you want me to move it?
Sure.
Okay. I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $36,541,181 as the town's apportion share of the Concord-Carlisle Regional School District Budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023. And that the same be expended only for such purposes and under the direction of the Concord-Carlisle Regional School Committee. Concord's total assessment is $24,967,842. And Carlisle's total assessment is $7,286,185.
So can I just ask one question? Why are these numbers different than the numbers on the sheet that you just showed us?
Yeah, that's my problem. They're close, but they're not the same.
No.
Jared, do you have the sheet in front of you still?
I do, we looked at that today.
I see 24962356 and 7284584.
Can I make a suggestion, Sarah, that we do the stabilization fund and let Jared prove this and then come back?
Yep, yep.
Okay, well, yeah, because we're not going to vote, we are going to defer the school policies to the next meeting. So let's move to the vote on the use of stabilization funds. Is there a motion, please?
I move that for the purposes of paying costs of reconstruction of the access road on the district's campus, including the payment of all of the costs incidental and related there, too, vote to authorize expenditures not to exceed $200,000 from the district's capital stabilization fund.
Second.
I, I so move.
Discussion?
Very consistent with where we were last time. I think the numbers, Lori, are exactly the same.
Yes. Yes, this is step two of what you said you were going to do last. All pending approval of the article. Both committees, both communities.
Exceed $200,000 from. So we're going to leave the extra to that, whatever the extra.
Yeah, there's $5 in there, or $50 or something, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, a little.
Keep the account alive, yep.
Yep.
Okay. We have a discussion and a vote. Stick a roll call vote, please.
Anderson, I.
Booth, I.
Morano, I.
Randy, I.
Wilson, I.
Thank you.
Jared, how you doing?
Just checking. That one looks right. What was the one we looked at earlier today? I'm very sorry for this, I'm over two, I think, here. What the heck was I looking at today? I think I know what I did. I think, I think the, the numbers that you saw on the other sheet were correct. Because what I did is I, at one point, I know I took the regional transportation, which was 725, and I adjusted that to 717. But Lori, the number we went at today, I don't know what I saw, so.
Jared, do you want to recess for five minutes?
Sure, yeah, we, we can do that. Take a little break.
Yeah.
I still have, you still have the rest for your meeting, yep.
Yeah, five minutes, we'll be right back with a plan.
Okay.
We're ready when you are.
Ready for me? I'm going to screen share, it is, it is the numbers that were in on the school committee sheet.
Court's not back yet, Jared, hold on.
I'm not quite on a break, did you, did you read?
Oh, I finished my book.
You'd, oh, Dragon Masters.
Alexa, you're not muted.
Oh, sorry.
Harry finished his Dragon Masters book, everyone doesn't want to know.
I was enjoying that.
Sorry, guys. Sorry, sorry. I'm enjoying all these Chinese New Year artwork and photos and all sorts of great things today coming up.
Happy year of the tiger.
You're the tiger, right.
Okay, Jared, Court is back, I think we're.
Sorry to keep you waiting.
We're all here, no problem.
My apologies, okay. So it is going to be the numbers that were, that you were referencing. And I'm going to screen share the new motion. Can you all see that?
So you took the numbers from the sheet and put them in the motion?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So does the motion need to be withdrawn?
Was it ever seconded? I can with, I withdraw my motion. And I will make a new one. My new one is.
Alex, Alexa?
Yeah.
Before you do, let's check the Concord total assessment is. Next, let's see. No, thank you, I'm, I'm all set, thank you.
We're good?
Yep, yep.
Right. Okay, I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $36,541,181 as the town's apportion share of the Concord-Carlisle Regional School District Budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023. And that the same be expended only for such purposes and under the direction of the Concord-Carlisle Regional School Committee. Concord's total assessment is $24,962,356. And Carlisle's total assessment is $7,284,584.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Anderson, I.
Booth, I.
Morano, I.
Rainie, I.
Wilson, I. Thank you. And so we'll return to public comment. Now, if there is any additional public comment, please use the raise hand feature in the participants tab or turn on your video so that you can be seen. And if we can stop the screen sharing, then I can see, yes, Terri Ackerman.
Oh, just very briefly, I want to support the fee structure and thank everybody for doing all of that work, especially Court Booth and the business office. I think it's very important to, I forget the exact phrase that you used, Court, but have the costs reflect, the prices actually reflect the costs and not make a profit or lose money, but to try to get them accurate. So thanks for all the effort. And I know some people will be shocked at the big increase. So yeah, doing it every few years is probably a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. David Hosford?
Thanks. As an educator, as a husband of a teacher and a father of two students in the CC system, I, I haven't sat through a lot of school committee meetings in my day and, and so I just wanted to appreciate, first of all, the great work you're doing and, and having so many irons in the CC fire.
David, hold on a second. We've lost your audio a little bit. I think something you sound more distant.
Okay, let me, um, let me just shift. Else and I'll shift.
You're good now. No, no, that's good. That's good now.
Okay, so having so many irons in the fire, it's great to, great to see you in action and I appreciate that. And I also appreciate you considering or reconsidering the fee structure. I appreciate that as well.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments at this time? Mr. Carr.
Yeah, just again, just wanted to say thank you. And also I appreciate you listening to, to us. And if you have any interest and need any information from us, kind of the impact it would have on our, our summer camps or our families, please feel free to reach out. I know I sent an email to the committee. I'm, I'm here if you would like to talk, but thank you for your time and it's great to see the, the attention you all gave to this issue. So thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. All right. If there are no further comments, nope. I will accept a motion to adjourn the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee and leave the Concord School Committee will remain in session.
I'll move.
Second.
Roll call. Anderson, I.
Booth, I.
Morano, I.
Rainie, I.
And Wilson, I. Thank you. Good night. Happy New Year, everyone. Good night.
Hey, the Congress School Committee remains in session and our first item is FY twenty-three budget.
Thank you. So we were asked to take some time with the CPS budget and look at where we were. I know you had hoped for reductions, which I'm not sure I'm quite bringing you that, but definitely we did a deeper dive. So Debbie's here and Jared's here and some of the lens we ended up looking through was about special education. Primarily because as we studied the numbers we brought and the budget we built, a, a huge driver is the special education programming and the expansion of the continuum of intensive special need programs in district. Either, to some extent, current funding to support kids we kept in even in the last six months, but also expanding out so that we can age kids up or continue to expand programming. So I asked Jared to split out the requests and the percentage increase that correlates with that. So we could all see what we brought that would be the budget without the special education programming and then how the, the standalone special education increases look. And so that's what this detailed memo is and we can talk on it to whatever degree you want. I think the bottom line takeaway is that we're looking at an increase of two point two six without the special education programming needs and it bumps to the three point five four with them. And you can see he spent a lot of time in detail on this that I don't know that we need to go line by line on. Essentially it's staff, assistance at Thoreau, especially over the summer and into the coming school year. Expansion in other places with full-time teachers for branch, which is social emotional at Alcott and making sure we're fully fleshed out at the middle school. So that's one piece and we can talk on any depth of that that you'd like. Debbie spent some time too going through potential costs. We've been asked this a few times, including at the finance committee. So it seemed worth doing the modeling and the exercise. And Debbie, as always, was willing and ready to do it. So she put together an overview of potential real cost savings to keep the kids in these programs. You've seen that chart that she brought to you a few months ago. And then she fleshed out based on the number of kids in the programs, how much it would cost if those kids were going out of district at an individual basis. And that includes some of the expansions that we're proposing. So we wanted to do this modeling just to help you see why the numbers are what, what they are. I think the part that's worth noting is if we were to back out the special education programs, you'd definitely be getting a bump up in tuitions. But it also brings you to a, a really reasonable, I think the three point five is fairly reasonable, but even lower at two point two. So I just thought it was worth knowing what was causing what. And Debbie and Jared are here. If you have questions or want to talk on that and more, certainly it's a conversation as to what we want to do next with the CPS budget, knowing we're not in total alignment with the finance committee yet. I think I'll leave it that and we can just open it up for discussion.
Cynthia? Before we get into questions about numbers and programs?
Yeah.
I wonder if I can share something that concerns me. I believe, I believe that we as a school district have done a pretty good job of avoiding calling out sped and the, the costs of sped to the extent that it would pit sped against regular ed. I think we've been very successful with that for a number of years. So I'm a little concerned that by pulling out sped as if that's not part of our budget or our obligation to take an artificial look at what things would be like without a sped increase might be taking us in the wrong direction. Every kid is our kid.
Of course. That is not my intention.
No, no, I, I know, no, I know that, Lori. That's not my point. My, my point is that the, this kind of conversation can start to have a life of its own. And as I said, pit sped costs, which per pupil are significantly greater often than regular ed. And I'm not sure the end result is really good for us. So I just, I just want us to use real caution about this kind of, kind of exercise. That's, it's, it's my opinion. I'm not asking people to agree with me or disagree with me. I'm just saying, I hope we use great caution about singling out sped in, 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 when we have budget concerns. Everybody's our kid.
Of course.
Well, I guess I kind of see it as, I don't, I don't see this as like singling out these kids, but I do think that there's a real shift because of the programming we built. So I took it as, you know, because you built the programming at Thoreau, these kids are aging up. And so there is a reality to the cost of that. So I, I looked at it under that lens versus, you know, I, and I think we all need to know what the numbers are. So, and that's certainly not, you know, that's not an opinion one way or the other. It's just, I think that's, there's just a reality to what the costs are that we're looking at. That we should look at.
Yeah, would it be any different like than identifying, like, don't, we always identify, for example, like budget drivers when Jared does his budget, would this be akin to the?
But, but Alexa, that's my point. We didn't do that here. We didn't, we didn't talk about teacher contracts as a factor or or, or anything else. We singled out sped exclusively and that's gives me a little bit of discomfort for the reasons I stated.
Well, I think I want to just clarify, part of this is advocacy for doing right by the kids, which is keeping them, giving them more opportunity within the district. And the fact that we proposed what we've proposed is all about doing right for special education. So that's the lens I hope we put on it. It is a substantial, unique cost driver this year. That's why I'm pulling it out. It's a one-time event right now in terms of what we're asking for, for staffing. So given where we are, I thought it was important that we just talk that through. By no means are we pitting anything against anything else. We're trying to be sure we're all understanding why and where the budget got to and how.
Yeah, let me, let me repeat myself. I, I don't see this as us attempting to pit anything. I'm simply saying that sometimes this is the way it plays out. I've seen it before and I wouldn't want that, any chance of that happening. I, I have a question for, for Debbie. We, we build these programs because we very much want children to have an opportunity in district wherever possible, wherever we can meet their needs here rather than elsewhere. Not only because it's the right thing to do, but often we make the case that it's fiscally sensible, responsible and wise to do so. So this build out is not a savings. It's not even cost neutral. Do you think it'll be cost, and I haven't done the analysis of everything you, you've given us, but you, you have because you produced it. Do you think we'll be cost neutral on this investment in a year or two?
I do. I do think that we will realize savings immediately, actually. There's potential for some students to return to district. There would be potential for keeping students in district if we are able to create these programs. If we're not able to create these programs, there's risk for some students having to be tuitioned out of district. So I think there's an immediate savings.
Okay. All right. So the, the offsets are going to be coming our way sooner or not later.
I believe so.
Great. Thank you. That's encouraging. Thank you. And there's no small amount of work on, on your part and Lori's and indeed your entire department trying to create these changes of this magnitude. So, so thank you. Glad, glad you're among us to, to lead this effort.
I'm thoroughly enjoying it.
So I, Debbie and Lori, I really appreciate the work, although I think we have to continue looking, you know, you're, you've done a good job of convincing us, I think that that we will realize potentially more savings in FY twenty-three. I just get concerned that FY twenty-four is going to be very challenging. So if this isn't going to be a place that we can look at cuts and it's going to stay with us, right, and those salaries are going to increase year after year, we have to look elsewhere. So I don't have, I don't have anything to propose or look at tonight, but I'm going to go back and go through it again before next meeting. So I hope we have this on the agenda next time. This does not, you know, it's a, it's a good presentation for us not to alter that part, portion of the budget. But I guess now we're going to have to look elsewhere.
I think, I'm hoping you'll hold at the three, five and we'll continue to talk with the finance committee because we haven't made asks that aren't important.
But I'll just say.
I will keep looking and things do keep changing as time goes on. So I'm, I'll certainly keep doing that. I also worry about putting cut lists up that can definitely have impact somewhat of what Court's saying. Can stir things up. So I'm, I'm certainly still looking. That's what this all evolved from.
But the, the CTA salaries are a big jump next year. So I don't think any of us can deny that.
But there is, there's also nothing we can do about that, correct?
Right. We'll be farther away from the guideline significantly.
So the jump was actually in FY twenty-three, just so you know.
What's that?
Twenty-four, twenty-four is going back down to two point five. So the jump was in FY twenty-three, two point seven five. So the salaries are built in.
Well, I'll go and look. I, I, I added another number from another some sheet, so.
Yeah, you might be going off, I think you're going off the FinCom project that I did and those were all based on assumptions, not you know, best, best assumptions, but.
They're pretty good assumptions, I think, for what we, we talked through them, but yeah, we should bring those up next week and just take a look at those again. Next, not next week, our next meeting. But I don't think we're going to make any changes tonight. Well, I'll have to look and see when the next FinCom meeting is. I'm not sure off the top of my head. Well. Debbie, thank you for hanging in here tonight and talking with us. I really appreciate it and all the work you've done.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
I lost my screen, sorry.
I have a quick question before we go.
Sure.
Before we go on from this, and I might be not fully understanding this, but if based on the money that we've saved at the region in our assessment there, I know like it's not like an, one account that you can transfer to the other, but essentially is there like an intellectual way to offset these? Does that, if that makes sense and, and, and apply it to close that delta?
Well, this is the only thing. We didn't save any money. The governor gave us more money.
Right, which then is lowering our assessment. So we're not spending as much money there.
Correct.
So we can call it savings or not, but so we're spending two hundred thousand less. And like, again, intellectually to me, that seems like a savings. You know, can you, can you essentially apply that to the delta, that this delta, because what are we still at around three? Three fifty-ish?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Three point five four.
I think in answer to your question, from my own experience, Alexa, is the finance committee is cognizant of this. So yes, it's an intellectual exercise for them. Whether, whether it goes practical in any way is not something we can speak to, but, but we do know they're aware of it. They're acutely aware. Yes.
So it's something that they could consider in their next meeting and then.
And I have to go look at, even though chapter seventy money at the Concord Public Schools doesn't help our budget, but I don't know what Carrie had and what we received from the state. Might have to look at that.
Yeah, the region, the region received, just so you know, the region did receive a lot more because of the enrollment. Concord had a decrease.
Okay, great. That's, gotcha. Yep. Okay, thank you. Great. All right. Concord Middle School Building Project.
I'm imagining we're waiting with bated breath to decide what the next move looks like.
All right.
And I think the, everybody involved has been very careful to stand down to let the citizens do what they do. That's my own take on what I've seen and heard. It's very appropriate.
I do think our communications committee, I'm intending to put just to our opt-in lists and our user, end user lists, our points of contact list, I'll probably put out one just, they probably are sick of hearing from me, but one maybe final reminder that the vote is, will be in fact the following day. But then hopefully they can have a nice little break. then hopefully they can have a nice little break from hearing from me.
Yeah, the, we, we know the weather. We, we know what has gone in by way of public information and public process. What we don't know, what I don't know is will the precinct changes be problematic in any way? Hope not.
Yeah. I think there's been really great communication from what I've seen trying to prevent that from happening. It's been a great triumphant effort on the part of the league and the towns.
Yeah, right. The, the, the question is, will decades of habit be, be interrupted with a good read of an email from the town clerk or the league or you? And yeah, hope so, hope so.
We all have habits. We're looking to break, right?
All right. Yes. Can I just also just publicly acknowledge one more time, the building committee and the work that Alexa and Court and Lori and Jared and select board members and everyone did because going to that town meeting and seeing the vote go the way it did was truly a testament to, you know, a lot, many, many months of hard work. So I just wanted to publicly say thank you again.
Great.
Yeah. And, and you know, I don't throw accolades around with great abandon. But, but I will say, Lori, you are as genuine, authentic, passionate as I've ever heard you. You know, that, that vision of that school is not a speech. It's, it's you.
Yeah, thanks.
You know, it was, it was, it was quite something to witness.
It's a great night.
Get out.
Really? Yeah. Okay, the rest of the week brings folks.
Yep, we're glad the storm is on Friday.
Yes.
It looks like something of a storm, right?
It there, sure. Yeah. The snow day watch was activated. The CCHS snow day watch I saw.
Oh, good.
I never liked that on my.
I don't like to see that.
No, me neither. It's fun though.
I dream of June, really.
With you, Tracy.
All right. And we will end our evening with the variance report from Mr. Stanton. Jared, do you want to?
Very quick, do you mean to say anything? Great. So yeah, just like the region, we're, we're tracking well. We're able to encumber a little bit more at CPS. So pretty much every single line is in balance at CPS. So we're at about one, one point four unencumbered, which is in line again with, with previous years. And we're tracking well. We still have some, some, some monies that are going to need to be reclassified in our grants. But yeah, we're, we're in really good shape.
Any questions? About either the one hundred or the thousands?
And feel free to email me if you have questions about them. And I do, and I'll send you an email about, I, I know why the twelve thirty and the twenty three fifty seven functions. Mr. Booth's question. So I'll answer those in an email, but feel free to.
Okay.
So we, we don't have much of a remaining balance, but that's because you've got more confidence in your encumbrances. Is that safe to say?
Yeah. And in the region, just because of the health insurance and some other things that it's more difficult to encumber. That's why it's always a that usually we'll always have a higher balance at this point in time than CPS.
Yeah.
Thank you. Well, I see zero action items. Now I'll take a motion to adjourn.
We have any more public comment? I see Christine's hands up.
Oh, sure. I'll take.
Have a chance for that. I don't even know if it's in the agenda. I didn't look.
No, we'll take a public comment. We're finished with our business. Christine, you can turn your camera on and.
Okay, I think you can see me hopefully. Yeah, just wanted to let you know that the next FinCom meeting is on the twenty fourth. It's on February twenty fourth. So that's when, and I'm sure we'll, we'll take up the CPS budget gap at that discussion. In our last meeting, we, Cynthia, you, you let us know that this, this additional revenue would lower the high school assessment, but we didn't take that into our sort of discussion at the time. So we'll, we'll be looking at that as well when we meet on the twenty fourth. So just wanted to let you know.
I informed them at the conclusion of their discussion.
Right. So we had it at the end. So we, we, we took a look. We also had some good news on revenue from the town. So we'll be relooking at all that again on the twenty fourth. So I just want to let you know.
Perfect. Thank you for the update.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Chris.
All right. You want to see anybody else? Thank you for that, Alexa.
Sure.
So now I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Anderson, I.
Who's I?
Miranda, I.
Rainy, I. We'll have a new school committee member with us at our next meeting. So.
And, and well, does that school committee member get seated with the town? So they get sworn in immediately? Is that the situation?
My understanding, unless you have any other information.
No, no, I have no information. Just. Sorry.
I still have no information about Monday night, Cynthia. I haven't heard.
I'll have to call her tomorrow.
Yeah, maybe do. And will you share it with me if you get her first?
I, I have no idea what's going on. So we're talking about the caucus, which is on Monday.
Oh, that's right. That's right. Okay.
That's the fun.
All right.
Do you know anything?
Oh, Terry.
Sorry. So there's been no information about the caucus. Is that right?
I have none.
Me neither.
Oh, boy. Okay. We have a lot of turnover in the town manager's office. I will get that right away. We just have a new person replacing Jeremy who started yesterday. So I thought that had gone out. We'll put out a news and notices right away. There is a caucus, seven o'clock Monday, and it is not by Zoom. We have to do it by law, live and in person. So we're going to do it at the townhouse.
Thanks, Terry.
On Monday.
And the only other question regarding that is I already have a person who would, is not willing to come inside. So I, I just need to talk to the town clerk about options there in terms of reading.
Wow. That, oh, boy.
Yeah, anyway.
Okay.
Thanks, Carrie.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks. Good night, everybody.
Have a good night.